Everyone the same for the flag please. Very good, only the four of us this evening. Mr. Brumel had a previous engagement to say. Very good, all right, minutes of July 18th, 2018, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
Send me this second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills, we have a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I had a couple of questions earlier and Louis George answered them for me. Thank you Lou. Any other discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The administration of oath of office, chief.
Evening everybody. Important night here, great night, exciting night for those in the police department that's wearing three of our recruits. Even though they're not quite officially officers yet, because they haven't taken their state of football officers anyway. So I could get Josh Blackson, come on up, Josh would stand over there, Dale Smith and Joshua Ray. Just a little background here, all three of these guys who've worked, guys who've worked pretty hard, I mean since January of this year. Over at the Hartford County Sheriff's Department Training Academy. Went through some really rough weather early on, actually for most of January, February, March. And they're now on the very, very home stretch. Graduations tomorrow evening over in Hartford County. They'll start their field training this weekend. One of you starts Sunday, the other two. Okay, all right. So anyway, Josh Blackson, Josh is a graduate of the Hodgins Tech over in Delaware. Also has an associate's degree in criminal justice from a Delaware Technical Community College. And he is here tonight with his family, his wife Lisa Blackson Duncan, his mom Laura and beautiful dog Duncan.
Service dog.
Service dog, it's our new canine. Josh Ray, Josh is a graduate of Northeast High School. And he's here tonight with his mother Rosemary Delaney. And Dale Smith is, Dale graduated from Perryville High School and attended Cecil College. He has 10 years of service with the Cecil County Detention Center before joining our team. So we welcome all three of you, we're looking forward to having you as official members of the Elton Police Department. And we know you guys are going to do a great job. They're all going to come forward and administer the oath of office.
So what we're going to do is we're going to do the oath of office and then we'll have each of you individually come up here with your family and get a photograph. How's that sound? Does that work? All right, very good. So what we're going to do is, right hand up. I state your name.
I, Joshua.
Do you swear in a firm?
Do you swear in a firm?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
The best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality.
Without partiality.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer.
Execute the office of police officer.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Thank you guys. Get a photograph of everybody if I could, real quick. Is there a bright camera? Perfect, one at a time, bring your family on up here. Chief, you want to get a picture of your name?
Be a man on this side. Better man get a bow.
Big smiles.
All right. Watch your step there. Oh, like gun for that or something. Hey, was your father? Play a lot of golf.
Hell, believe me. All right.
My mentor.
If he can tell you where to get him.
All right. There you go, I got a few. I know you are. Thank you so much. All right gentlemen.
Very good.
Thank you sir.
Thank you, no one has to stick around unless you want to. But I also wanted to mention to you, we had county councilman Bob Metley in the back, he came to watch us tonight. Thank you Bob for sticking around, should have had you up here for a photo.
And Dale was also a student of mine at Perryville High School, so a special congratulations to him as well as the others too.
Yes, great teacher, one of the best we had.
Congratulations.
Thank you sir.
Thank you so much. Lou, you're on. Employee in the board?
Thank you.
Ned Ramey, Fred Hayes and Denny Birds were responsible for determining the need to replace two water meters in the concrete vault located along Bell Hill Road. Specifically the Elton, Artie and Water Maryland interconnection vault. The meters installed were turned over, now we're not equipped with a remote touch readout. It requires PPW personnel to prepare and enter confined space to obtain meter readings. Combined cost of replacing the meters will cost $8,600. However, the water crew used their initiative to wire the eight inch and two inch water meters to touch pads installed outside the vault. That resulted in both economic benefits and damage by not having to purchase new meters and by eliminating the need for personnel to conveniently enter confined space of the vault to obtain meter readings. We applaud the initiative of Ned Ramey, Fred Hayes and Denny Birds for providing modifications to the Bell Hill meter vault. Then proved efficiency, provided cost saving and removed the personal safety of town employees. hereby recognize these three men as included for the first court of 2018.
Add a little more tea to the bottle, it's about an eight, nine foot tea. When that goes quick the apple deal, so they took it upon themselves, made it work and they did a very good job, so let's recognize them.
Get you guys to smile real big with Dan. Want to get it off top? Come on top, I want you guys up on top, Dan go around the other way. I think it'd be better, put your chairs out of the way. I'm good, I'm good right here. Everybody do. Sheriff?
I'm respecting you.
Don't put that in the shot. Okay Lou, you were on.
The foresight I might have is ordinance 10 dash 2018. Amends chapter, chapter 5.20 yard sales of the town code. Was introduced at the meeting, at the last meeting. This chapter is amended as follows, section 5.20, 0.010 definition, person being defined as this included under the chapter 1 of the fourth general division of town code. Under section 5.20, 0.020 permit required, number of yard sales per day annually has been increased from twice to four times. This will provide some additional flexibility for residents to offer personal possession for sale and no venue at their home. Under section 5.20, 0.20, 020, permit required, provision of Sunday sales has been eliminated. Under section 5.20, 040 signs, the words have been added requiring the yard sale sign to be removed. While in completion of the yard sale, the second division of the section has been struck. Under section 5.20, 0.060, weight requirements referenced to town councils been struck. And the term town administrator asserted, or any consultant or TA to provide waivers to eligible organizations. Last section under 5.20, 070 violation, penalty for violation of this chapter is $100 as specified in the chapter.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 10 dash 2018, chapter 5.20 yard sales presented for adoption. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion on the adoption of this ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Next item I have is ordinance 11 dash 2018, amended chapter 12.20 Public Park Regulations Town Code. Was presented to the mayor commission for last meeting for introduction, presented tonight for adoption. Chapter 12.20 has been amended as follows. Under section 12.20, 050, wild animals, domesticated animals, controlled animals, people waste prohibited. Second paragraph following has been added to this section. A dog may be unleashed and permitted to run freely inside a fenced area designated by a sign posted by the town as a dog park. Rules regulating use of dog park posted at the location. Under section 12.20, 050, wild animals, domesticated animals, controlled animals, people waste prohibited. Fourth paragraph following was added, including a dog park. Under section 12.20, 080, violation penalties, $100 for violation of this chapter.
We have a motion to accept ordinance 11 dash 2018, chapter 12.20 Public Park Regulations Presented for Adoption.
Remove.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this at all? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is the sale of real property. Property currently owned by Chesapeake Holdings WT-DELLC, which is a M&amp;G Bank subsidiary. The property that is being offered for sale by the bank to the town without line in yellow, Gene Minter has prepared a drawing up there to show where it is. Consists of, it's parcel, tax parcel, tax parcel 319, I'm sorry, tax map 319 parcel 2406. This is a 46.5774 acres, private property, Jason and West Development Estates and North and South Street residential subdivision. Sale price is $250,000. Town proposes to purchase this property using $126,977 in critical area forest mitigation money or paid in lieu money. And $123,023 in forest conservation fund. Purchase and sale agreement has been reviewed by John Downs, who is a consultant. Sales agreement between the town and Elton and Chesapeake Holdings. If you'd like to comment on that, James, John?
No, it's fine.
Everything's good?
Yeah.
Did you give any comments?
I think it's a good use for the forest conservation fee and lieu money, Critical Area Fee and lieu money. You may have a letter from Critical Area before you where they support or endorse the purchase of the property with the fee and lieu funds.
And just to be clear, the money that we're using, the fee and lieu money has to be used for?
For street premises.
So this is a fantastic use of this money to acquire this parcel land. And I, we do have your letter, actually it's a thank you for reaching out to the Critical Area Commission. They feel it's a great use for us to acquire that land also. And I think that when folks look at the parcels, 46 acres, surrounding, it's actually touching the town of Elton property as it sits now. It was called Marina Park Extended now. And this would be surrounding the Elton Estates, which is a county parcel. And it butts up a little bit onto 213. But I'm excited about this because I believe that now we can truly extend a trail from Marina Park. This will give us access all the way down through to Whitehall Road. Which will allow the residents of Kensington Courts to be able to travel into Marina Park or Marina Park area, hopefully. I know there's some issues with the waterways and so forth through there, but the goal is, we can extend that trail through there. Hopefully the residents of our town can walk right into downtown Elton, Marina Park without ever having to crawl through 40 and/or even 213. So it's a real nice continuation of our park system.
And the majority of the property, 35 acres or so, is in a targeted environmental area. Targeted by the DNR for preservation due to its sensitive nature and importance in the ecosystem.
Very good. Do we have a motion to?
Prior to the motion, I would suggest that the board here may read Resolution R9 2018. That basically would be the board's authorization to purchase real property.
Thank you Lou.
As a matter of record. A resolution of the mayor commission is authorizing the purchase of real property. Whereas the charter of the town of Elton, Article 1313, statute one, acquisition, possession, disposal. Provides the town may acquire real personal or mixed property in easements, appurtenances, rediments and other interested property within or without the town limits of the town for any public purpose. By option, personal gift, request, device, lease, condemnation or otherwise. And may sell these or otherwise dispose of any property where interested property is owned in the town. And whereas Chesapeake Holdings WT-DELLC 25 South Drawl Street, 13th floor Baltimore, Maryland. Is the owner of certain real property identified as parcel 2406 on tax map 319, consisting of 46.5774 acres. And also described as remaining land dash 45.5774 acres, plus or minus Augustine and Earl Highway of property. Chesapeake Holdings has agreed to sell to the town of Elton for the sum of $250,000. In accordance with the terms and conditions stated in the purchase and sale agreement signed between Chesapeake Holdings as seller and the town of Mayor Commissioners of the town of Elton, Maryland as the buyer. And whereas the mayor commissioners have agreed as of the date of this resolution to purchase the aforementioned and described property from Chesapeake Holdings for the sum of $250,000. In accordance with the terms and conditions stated in the aforementioned agreement. Now therefore the mayor commissioners of the town of Elton nearby resolve and follow. That the mayor commissioners authorize the finance department to take the appropriate action to disperse those funds held in the general fund reserved for Critical Area Forest Mitigation. In the amount of $126,977. Along with those funds reserved for Forest Conservation Fund in the amount of $123,023. To Chesapeake Holdings WT-DELLC for the express purpose of purchasing the property. Two, that the mayor commissioners authorize Mayor Robert Gill to execute any and all pertinent documents relating to the sale of this property, oh sorry, to the purchase of this property.
Do we have a motion to accept resolution R-9 2018, authorizing the purchase of the real estate?
Is that moved, sir?
We have a motion and a second. Once we move forward on this, then I'm assuming that settlement would be 90 days after or a standard settlement time?
Yes.
Very good, any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Actually I only had one thing, actually I have two things, but I think the other I'll pass over to Mary Jo. Okay, I'd like to make an appointment to the planning commission. I'd like to appoint Mr. James Hutchinson for the term August 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2023. Do we have a motion to accept my recommendation for the planning board? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I wanted to mention that Dave Forsyte served the planning board and he did a fantastic job for the town of Elton for five years. And we appreciate Dave's efforts on the planning board, he did a great job and I'll go point someone. Thank you. I'm going to mention it Mary Jo, but you might want to elaborate when I turn it over to you here in a minute. The, we were very pleased to be able to host the Maryland Economic Development Association, MEITA. Last week in the town of Elton, I think we had, I don't know if it was 90, 100, 110, 120 people. We had a lot of people from all over the state, state and states. Came into the town of Elton and we were able to host it. It's the first time that the town of Elton has ever hosted that event. During our conference, I actually asked that, I'd like to see Elton host this event each and every year. It keeps us very, very much in touch with our planners across the state and our officials and our secretary. Secretary Holt was in town. It does us very good to be in and know with these individuals and it was a great opportunity for the town of Elton. With that, Mary Jo, you're on.
Okay, it was 125 people registered, but they did have some register at the door as well. So it was a great thing for the town and I just want to mention one thing. When MEITA people left, they said this was the most welcoming town they had ever been to. And now from us doing what we did to host them, all these little towns from all over are putting their name in to host the event. But, and I really want to thank, the best thing was, out of all the years, and she has been with MEITA, the executive director since 2000. And, no, I'm sorry, 2004, 14 years. And she said, she has asked for the flashing state highway sign or whatever, that we actually have one of our own. And it was the first time ever a town did that for them. And when she pulled off 95 and I was meeting her here, she had to pull over because it was raining, take a picture of the welcome MEITA, whatever it said. And she said that was the best thing ever. So, thank, yeah, that's what I want to say, I want to thank Dan Manley for putting that out there. And then when they left, she said, oh my gosh, who is this person? Now I have one going to say.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for, yeah. So that was a very good feeling and everyone, everybody who, the town, the merchants, the, everyone that was there just really appreciated us being so welcoming. It was great. And if you go on MEITA's website, it just came out today, there's some great, great pictures of the conference.
Anything else?
I just want to ask the chief, how many officers do we have now?
Forty-one.
Forty-one, okay. That's it, thank you.
I'll be giving a report next meeting for the Parks and Rec, getting all my information today.
Very good. Charles?
I stuck my head in at the Maryland Economic Association meeting and it was well attended. Our facility was nice and welcoming. I was really appreciative of the mayor and I told him, because I was texting him at the same time, but he was leaving. He did an outstanding job in addressing the conference as well as putting Elton in a very high light. With his comments of saying what we plan to do in the future and what we have done. And it's always good if you invite somebody to your house, it's also nice to be very welcoming and let everybody know what we're doing. So again, Rob, thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
On our end. It's also nice to see the kids over on the future home of the recreation center. They've been there yesterday, they were there yesterday and they're there today. And that's probably because there's no space around the town of Elton. It is soccer season and football season, you see kids all out. It's unfortunate that the metal heart is in the condition it is because otherwise today you would see oodles and oodles of children out there participating. So let's continue to be hopeful that rain does not keep them away any longer. And that's it.
Lou, can you give us a real quick update on the flood issue? I mean the debris that's been taking out from underneath the bridges, where we stand with that?
The, Del Avenue, the state already removed that, it was relatively a quick operation. Enormous amount of sediment they had to remove, I think that's why it was closed as long as it was. And then I had, went up to Red Hill, the PACT 281, the bridge over the creek there. And I stopped and looked and saw the enormous amount of debris that had accumulated there. So I notified the resident maintenance engineer at here and the next thing I know I came up there. And they even had to dig out part of the railing to access it with their excavator. But they have quite a, quite a number of tons of stuff to get out of there. Worse, I've seen it for some time. Meadow Park, I think Dan could probably give you the best thing there, but a lot of sediment there will probably end up having to replace the mulch and everything in the playgrounds. And the volleyball court and everything, because it really did leave a lot of mud. And he's cleaning that up and the debris and everything. But the park has a rejuvenating characteristic and it will come back again, it overdoes. I mean it's a beautiful place, just that we hit a bad snag there.
Yeah, the park's actually open for walkers, we've kind of locked it off, so the park, the dog park, they can use the trail. And we'll keep that up, trying to keep the mud down to see what flood. And then as we get access actually to the fields themselves, clean them up, that eventually the park will open. But Louis is right, I think I replaced the mulch and there's a lot of clay and all that stuff. We physically can't walk on the field yet until they dry up. Then you're afraid of it and we're too busy in there. But the track is available for the walkers.
Is the field across the street, the Evans McKinney Field, is that available for the football group or is that still pretty wet too?
It's still a little bit wet and it's also logistics too, because of the amount of people, so, you know. For smaller events, they can do the smaller events. The football program brings off a lot of cars, so that's why we try to hesitate that one, because that's more the bigger parks, you know, just for the park. Logistics behind that one.
Very good, I'm expecting a call anytime asking when the parks will be open.
That's right.
There's no question about that.
We're working on it.
I know, you're doing a great job. Well this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for anyone from the public that would have anything to say this evening. If you'd like to say something, please come down and sign your name and your address and number and. Here we've been our first. Come on down, yeah. Please state your name and address and tell us who you are. Please state your name and address, and tell us who you are. Yes, peek into the mic, so everyone can hear you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Vicki from the Cecil County Pregnancy Center. I'm the new director over there, and I'm calling to see if we could get permission to do a 5K in November to raise funds for the center. Anything of you know anything about the Pregnancy Center?
Lay it on us.
Okay. We've been in Cecil County for 41 years, and we offer all free services to young women and families in the county by offering on parenting classes and peer counseling, free material aid, free pregnancy tests, free ultrasounds. Everything's free service, we have diapers, formula, cribs, so means anything that a family could need to help them function better and not be a cost. So we feel like we're a help to the community, and we've been helping the community for 41 years, we are not a profit, so we need funds to open the doors, we can continue. We've had 150 clients this year, and we've already had 600 some appointments. People have either come in for classes, sometimes to courts, and social services systems and preparing classes for children in the system, and so all that's free. So we're trying to do something new and exciting, and try to get some funds in, and that's one of the labor dash, it's called, in November 10. And we would do it the easiest way for the town, so if it needs to be in the park, that's fine, we'll work with you, whatever way we get their permission.
Very good. And I think at the, many meetings ago, if it looks like it's going to be a road closure, then we ask you to go and work through the Elton lines. And I think you've been working with Michelle.
And she also.
We've been working together. So I think you get everything in line first, then you'll bring it to the board, we'll vote to give the final yea or nay. But if you're going to use the town park or use the cross-country area, I think that's, that works out pretty easy. So as long as you keep Mary Jo and Michelle in the loop, I think our board will be supportive. If they give you the thumbs up, we give you the thumbs. Thank you so much. Yeah, we'd love to have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you have anything else.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? Come on down.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Gerber, I live at 65th Street and South Street. The subdivision of South Street has had quite a few surprises in the past six months or so, and the sale of 2406 is another big surprise for us, considering it comes right behind our houses, and we haven't seen any of the plans or anything. So we're hoping the town will give us a little more information about what the use of that is going to be.
We certainly will. I think as you see it sitting now, is, I feel pretty sure to say to you, it might be the, pretty much the way it'll be sitting for many, many, many years. I think just to bring everyone a little bit up to date on the whole parcel, I think it was, how many acres, Jean? I'm going to kind of rely on you to maybe help me.
For this tract?
This parcel here was?
Forty-six.
And what was the total amount?
I don't recall, because the other portion of this is phase one, which, this is remaining land.
This is, yes.
So, and so phase one is the neighborhood of South Street, where there's vacant lots, lots available for development.
We, the town of Elton did not acquire, or is not going to acquire, the existing building lots that are still available to build. But we believe that there's going to be a contractor soon, through some discussions, that's going to move forward to finish that project. In fact, it would probably, next Wednesday at our workshop, here at noon, there's a developer coming in to actually talk about that subdivision.
Yes, Michelle, that's called me about that.
Yes, which is good. And our intent with the property was to have it, it joins our property, it fills the need of what we're supposed to be using, the money in lieu of, and it worked out pretty well. And I think most people probably enjoy that rather than having another 50 houses back here.
It was just a surprise, and we were told all along through foreclosure that everything had to be sold together. So we were quite surprised that the two parcels were split up after being told for so long.
Yeah.
That, so we don't know what the implications are for South Street one with that. Those changes can be made, or there has to be significant changes made to the plan of South Street one.
I can't really answer that. I don't think it would be any change to any of the development, and that would be something we'd be working with our Planning Commission very closely with.
Well, we just kind of threw them out.
Well, we want to get that project finished, it's.
It's a reported subdivision. It won't change at all. The building lots and all that, they're all recorded, so there wouldn't be any changes to that except additional construction. And the 46 acres is all forest land that we acquired, and because of the nature of the money that we're using, it has to remain forested. And the mayor's idea would be to just put a permanent path through there for people to access other park space, but that would be it, there wouldn't be any improvements. That would include structures and things of that nature.
Well, the parcel 2406 goes right up to the lot lines near where.
Oh, yeah.
So as I said, I haven't seen your diagram yet, I haven't heard any of the plans, so.
I can assure you, we will keep, this was, this came up, we reached out to the bank that has helped add the foreclosure, and we felt it was the right thing to use this for, and we don't want to interfere with the existing building lots that's left, and we're going to encourage someone to build on the remaining. But I think as you see it there, it's healthy, but I would like to invite you in next Wednesday if you can make it, and we will, the planning board will keep you in the loop on that.
As I said, this was just a big surprise.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.